Thank you very much for joining us on our regular board meeting, April 9th, 2018. The time is 7:04. Can I have a roll call, please? Nelson?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Blackman?
Here.
Bradus?
Present.
Huckabee?
Here.
Ford? Here, and a Ford is present. First item on the agenda tonight, our audience comments. Tom and Bob Taggery, who have signed up. Please go free.
Bob's coming up.
I'm sorry?
Spoke in the email to you guys before, issues that we had with security safety at Parker. So I know there was an incident a couple of weeks ago, a week from, two weeks ago.
It was Friday before we rushed spring break.
And my wife lives in school, and people that eat up there know what's going on. I talked to Dana and Mr. Hunter, and it's a process where they come somewhere. When Mr. Cunningham leaves, that there is, please do a, whatever out there, they weren't quick to handle the situation. So we thought we'd process it, get that fixed. And I've had some sort of solution for once. Cunningham goes to break for lunch, I'm losing a D man at the door. And Mr. Hunter sent out an email later on to the school saying the kids were safe, and everything like that.
That I was safe at all times.
Our kid was in the office, and this guy that went through, he raised right by.
He made it through the locked door. So, once he made it through the locked door, all the kids were at risk.
So it was a volatile situation, you know, it was. It was kind of downplayed a little bit. So we want to make sure that we do, you know, I talked to the chief of police, Mark Pulick, afterwards, while they were arrested. And he said it isn't the worst, that they're going to, or they talked to whoever, that they are gonna try to get out of security detail similar to Asia. So, that's, you know, that's what we need. Because we don't want to see that, you know, it was a security situation. I was in the car, but she was in the office, and our son was inside the office.
So if we can afford to learn from this, and do something now, or just have a, maybe something else.
So I talked to Dana, you know, in the office, and we got our team on board, and hopefully some get together where, you know, we should say.
No. I was gonna go on a different point. We also have a problem with discipline in our school. When our kids come home, moms have daily cases, that there's no lunch, that the kids are standing on the desk in the cafeteria, and he said, he was describing the situation, he said, "It's like a prison show that you watch now." Now, I don't know about you, but I don't mind my junior high kid having anything to do with the prison. And they, I feel like they're going to juvenile detention every day when they drop them off. They are talking about fights, and fights between girls, and fights between boys, and in their classroom, there's a lot of discipline problems, and so the teacher has to stop teaching, and she has to address that. Sometimes they listen, sometimes they don't. It takes a lot of class time, and then, you know, she's got to kick them out of class. And so, you know, I don't know, I understand that there's laws in Illinois that you can't say, "If you do this, then this is going to happen across the board." But if you look at models of schools, junior highs, that are doing it, and everybody is orderly and doing what they're supposed to do, I'm sure it has to be disciplined. And there, it's very loose at Parker. The kids are very disrespectful. I chaperoned a choir concert in the same year, and for my youngest son, and he's the youngest of six, so I do this all the time. And there was a group of children that, they had no respect for me.
Sixth grade girls.
Sixth grade girls, they had no respect whatsoever. They refused to listen to me. I've never experienced anything like that before.
And the teacher was crying?
The teacher was crying. And I finally, I went and sat by them, and we were in the gym, so there was parents, and there was other people performing, and I went and sat by them, and I said, "Be respectful to the other people that are performing." They didn't care, they wouldn't even look at me. So then I had to say, "If you, if I hear you again, then during the day after the night." And then they were mad, and they were talking amongst themselves about me. And we're talking six grade girls. So, I don't know what the answer is, but, you know, like I said, I have six kids, and none of my kids do that, anywhere, with anybody. And I went up to the choir teacher afterwards, and I told her what happened, and she was very flustered, and she said, "I know, it happens all the time." So I don't know, she doesn't have the discipline tools to deal with a situation like that, but I felt really bad for her. And I'm sure at some point you're gonna lose her to another school where they do have discipline, and they don't have those powers. Because they can't, there's two choirs, the sixth grade choirs. The other choir did a very good job. My son was in this choir, and because of the discipline problems, they didn't really know their songs, and it was very apparent, and my son was kind of upset about it. And it was because the teacher is always disciplined. So, when there was a field trip, I emailed you, and I emailed the principal and the teacher, and I said, "Normally I would volunteer to go on this field trip and sing and chaperone, but I am not going to do it, because I'm not going to be around children like that that don't know how to behave." And I go find my son in here, and go to a museum, and be associated with the school that allowed that to happen.
Well, in fact, when I was younger, the kids that were problems, the parents had to go. The mom had to go, the dad had to go, whether they were working or not. I don't, because my mom had to go on field trips with us. Being after she had been, you know, my wife, my friend, she got the, the kids that were, you know, little brand bunches. So, that might be something, I don't think, law that you can do that out, but maybe the parents need to go and get involved, or maybe the parents need to come intentionally to the kids, to see what they do, how they acted, and how disrespectful they are. If the kids have a problem, maybe they should walk the halls with them. You know, if my kid was bad, I would expect, I would be in school with him, making sure he was toeing along. So hopefully we can get this resolved, and, you know, we'll see you in the next board meeting.
Well, thank you both, Eric. I mean, I also have a son at Parker, so I understand your concerns. I hear from him the moment he walks in the door as well. But you want to hear what he learns, or a little experience. You don't want to hear that, you know, so, 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 got into a fight. I, I am in total agreement. You know, and, so, and I know that junior high, they're, you know, they, kids are going to a lot.
They've been to schools.
But, you know, my other kids went to junior high, and this was not, no. So, thank you. Dr. Smith, can you just briefly highlight, so I know you have, you have been talking about this, and I know this is a part of a bigger discussion than the planning.
Yeah. So, what happened? Yeah. Thank you both for coming out.
Thank you.
I may have to, we'll talk more in depth, discussion just about safety and security at all levels, and adjustments that we can make for next year.
April 23rd. So, please come back to the April 23rd meeting.
We will.
We will.
Thank you. That was our only sign, name on our sign up sheet, so if there isn't anyone else wants to sign up, we will continue to move on.
Can I, can I just ask one more question? Why are we shelving this until next year?
Should we work on this for, should we work on this for the end of the year? Should we work on it on a monkey basis?
We can, it's a larger discussion. So, we can, instead of making a short-term decision that may have unintended consequences.
Right.
We can have a discussion on April 23rd.
Okay.
Come back in May at the next board meeting, where we're taking action, which is on May 14th. The word, that type of work, can decide and make a decision for the next three weeks of school, which is absolutely.
Right. Well, like we talked about, the process breakdown, and I told you about the, you know, the Six Sigma training and stuff like that, where you do a complete breakdown of where the process failed.
That's definitely.
And I think that would be a huge help.
Staffing change, though. Right. So, working with the possible police department, reviewing our processes and procedures, absolutely. And that won't be public, because it's a safety and security issue, and that information should not be public.
Okay.
But as far as staffing changes that the board may want to make, we'll discuss those at the next meeting. And again, we can look at those for the 17, 18 school year, but certainly for the 18, 19 school years.
Just to clarify, that we're, in understanding that, as these issues come up, we're not shelving, well, this is a great topic to talk about six months from now, these are things that we look to see, you know, what can we do today, what can we do next week, what can we do a month from now? And in terms of the meeting, it really is planning for a much more comprehensive, process-oriented system that minimizes disruptions, and also addresses relevant concerns regarding discipline. We are constantly going through a process of reviewing, say, okay, what can we do today or tomorrow? Some things, as the nature of policy and procedure, maybe should take much longer than, sometimes it makes us a little frustrated, but we do, in fact, address these things.
So, the other part of it is, we appreciate you guys coming out here. Tactical decisions like, this individual student did something, right? Those are students, decisions for Mr. Hunter, and Mr. Hennell. So don't, don't get the idea that they're not doing anything between now and the end of the year, but those are their decisions, and I think with the board, we trust them to handle those tactical decisions. The board's responsibility here, if the policy shifts is necessary, so, is what we're focused on, on 23rd. So, our view is very much what personnel changes, staffing changes, policy changes that we need to make to help solve this problem. But that's only about half of the problem, right? The other half is those tactical decisions on a daily basis. So, don't get the impression that if we say we're discussing this on the 23rd, that we're not addressing your concerns. What's gonna be discussed on the 23rd is the things that belong at the board level, which is what staffing, personnel, other changes can be made before, for next year. Okay? In the meantime, I trust that Mr. Hunter and all of his staff, and Mr. Smith, Dr. Smith are handling immediate discipline. I do thank you guys for coming out, because it's hard, it's really hard to get a objective graph on discipline, right? We can talk about numbers and fights, the data is always a matter of underwhelming, and it's, you know, I can categorize stuff, and, you know, my own kids are relatively useless. You know, they don't, how was they? They tell me nothing of any value. So, it's very helpful for us to hear from you guys what's going on in district, we appreciate it. And we have been working on this, and we will continue to work on it, but, you know, it's certainly not going to be a solution as simple as, let's set up a series of rules, or you get, and get bigger and more comprehensive changes needed. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Makes sense?
I think.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I went to Flossmore Junior High before, with Parker Junior High, so long ago. Margo Parker was still superintendent. And the first thing everybody said when I was going in seventh grade, "Boy, Junior High is out of control." Well, it was out of control 100 years ago now, when my oldest son, and I see some of his teachers back here, was going to Parker Junior High, "Oh my God, it's out of control. It's out of control." Well, it's middle school. Now my youngest is in seventh grade, and it's out of control. Well, middle schools are, as you said the other night when I was over at Parker for the, right, I mean, and the principal, that's, it's a tough situation. 13, 14, 12, 13, 14 year old kids. You can be in Lake Forest, you can be in Oak Brook, Inseal, Flossmore, doesn't matter. It's a little, it's a touchy place. The only thing that I, these teachers back here are such a wonderful resource, and I feel like they're getting a little more handcuffed. And they're, they're the ones that are on the front lines, that are dealing with my kids, your kids, all these kids. I hate to see them getting handcuffed. And I think that's, I really want the resources to help those teachers out. I know there's been some turnover with administration and stuff like that, but it doesn't seem like a lot with the teachers, at least to me. And, you know, they were wonderful six, seven years ago, and I can't imagine they're not wonderful. So I'd like to really see us support the teachers.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much for your comments. I'll just add one more thing before we move on to the next item. Thank you board members for also chiming in. You know, I think that our goal is, we want to, we want all of our students at Parker, and all of our schools, with Parker in particular, to end, you know, we've got a lot of school left, you know, before we break for the summer, and we want our students to have the most positive experiences over the next seven weeks as we can possibly imagine. If there's a field trip that comes up, I want you to feel like I can go on this field. You know, that actually, that statement actually breaks my heart, because I understand exactly what you mean. And so, even though the issues that we will be discussing and tackling as a board are larger systemic issues, that we will try and work to put something in place so that we have a different conversation next year, I have to believe that Dr. Smith and Mr. Hunter and his team will be working, if they aren't, you know, already doing so, and actually I know that you are, to try and make sure we end the school year with our students having a more positive experience. I know that you've been spending time in the lunchroom at Parker, so that you can experience some of this. I really do appreciate your comments, and we will, we will be working on this, because I absolutely want to make sure our students have a better experience over the next seven weeks. Okay, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the community engagement committee report.
We've got our recent community engagement committee meeting, right before our dessert with the 161. So, at the committee meeting, essentially just reviewed our schedule. We have communications manager interviews coming up next week. Really, huge round of applause to Allison Deitch at the village of Flossmore. She has been screening candidates. We have an incredibly talented and qualified pool, and we will that number down to six people to interview for round one, and one for round two. As we talked briefly about the interview process, and two upcoming dates, we have May 2nd, which is our next communication committee meeting, looking at summer planning, not too much prep for our next district of District 161, because that is on May 7th, and that's going to focus on summer activities, preventing the summer slide, summer reading lists, et cetera. Really all kind of leading towards our back to school event on Friday, August 17th, which is, we'll be in the press. It's gonna be a short meeting.
And I think at our last meeting, we said, sometime this fall, we will regroup and have a discussion about what the tenure looks like for this committee.
Again, that was, you know, giving the administration a chance to spend entire school year, giving the board a chance to spend an entire year as a board, and have the committee reexamine itself and decide, you know, how can we adapt to board our objectives.
Any questions or comments regarding the community engagement report? Next item on the agenda, superintendent's report.
So I touched briefly at the dessert with 160, or D161, I thought was a huge success. We probably had 80, 50 to 70 people.
Yeah.
In the library over at Parker. It was fantastic, really focusing primarily on the transition from fifth to sixth grade. We talked about other transitions, pre-K to K's, summer school, et cetera. But really, the elementary and middle school transition is the one that really drew the most attention. A lot of really good questions, just about the middle school experience, thanks to the Parker administrators for really representing the district well, ensuring a lot of activities that we're doing now, to support the transition of those kids, but also that they'll be doing over the summer, making sure that the kids get in and can really get off on the right foot in sixth grade. Otherwise, we are in the middle of PARC testing, and our assessment window is April 1st through the 20th. So I know our students and teachers and administrators are taking this very seriously, and I'm very thankful for that. We're really looking for some really positive achievement gains this year, especially with our new math coordinator being in front of a lot of building at all levels of the district. So, our math window, all our assessments, will open up during the first week of May, and that day that turns around pretty quickly, so we'll be able to have that uploaded directly into our forecastified data warehouse that we'll be talking about here in the next four to six weeks or so. But I would assume that the PARC data, even with the changes and that they're making at this state, I would not anticipate having that data before October. So, that's it, Matt?
Any questions or comments?
I guess I always ask this, but I probably don't answer anyway. But is there any way that we can get some really useful information from the PARC testing experience that teachers can turn around and inform your director of? Or is it pretty much like with all the curs of this test, it's really next year, as you know, you see the results that you weren't able to see, do we get?
Yeah, and part of the challenge is, we'll receive the results in October for students potentially aren't with us in long, or they've already gone on to the next grade level. So it's really trying to, we could use the PARC data more as a systemic look, and how we're aligned, and our current experience, but truly, math assessment is probably one of the better instruments that we could use in addition to common form assessments in the classroom, and other grade level teacher developed assessments.
Thank you.
Is there any pressure in the state Board of Education level to fix that someone ridiculous situation?
With, with data return?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's essentially useless, to be honest. Any idea, is that even on the schedule for K tools?
It is, it is, because they've changed the test contract. So I would assume that for next year, it will get better.
With every, with every statement I said.
Any more questions or comments? Next item on the agenda, our consent agenda items. I'm going to pull the personnel to discuss during executive session. So that leaves us with item A, which includes minutes of regular board education meeting, March 12, 2018, executive session meeting, March 12, 2018, along with FOIA reports. I need a motion, please, to approve the two items under the consent agenda.
So, we'll.
Brigades, Mr. Huck, please. Okay, Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Bradus?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ford? Yes, and the motion's passed. Next item on the agenda are discussion items. The first discussion item, change orders.
So we're bringing this back, this is the, we have representatives from Green Associates here. This was originally shared at the March board meeting, and we attached additional documentation, clarified a few of the pieces, specifically, a section that Green Associates will be paying for, but also a piece covered by Key, and then just added some additional information about why this cost is coming back. So this is only for discussion, there's no action recommended yet at this time. And the team from Green would probably like to just a few things.
Yes, good evening, like we have to do. Try to provide a little more clarity on these items, and I'd also like to start by saying that the numbers that were in the summary that was posted to the last meeting minutes have been improved on. And when I say that, what we tried to present when the question arose prior to the last board meeting was, worst case scenario, while the object had been presented, then the contract was. Since that board meeting, we had the opportunity to walk a couple, walk the buildings and confirm the amount of work that was completed, related to a couple of those items, and we disapproved a fair value of work related to those items. So we summarized those, plugged them into the, the guys' chamber room file, and I think what previous summary stated as a final potential cost of coordinating chambers at that time was $67,000, and some change. When deducting the balance of contingency, we would have provided for a change order of about $45,000. And again, after having the opportunity to confirm some of the items on site, and then reflecting some items that we were accepting responsibility for, we're projecting that it would be a potential change to the contract of about $27,000, et cetera. And that's, you know, that's, if you decide to go ahead and follow that in that large change order request, that Key has to, have to take any action. So, we're continuing to try to do our new buildings and get the job wrapped up. We try to identify in that large change order request, what items are required based on code requirements. Those are typically floor closures on quarter door doors that should have door closures. The uses of the spaces were potentially, you don't need to make changes, these are mazas, or you might want to decide based on the use of the space, where there are a lot of students that you want to receive the work, so try to further that by, in that way, to make decisions. Any questions? I'll be back to try and answer.
So, I just want to clarify something. So, the information that we have in our board package, will there be a change in that, or this is reflected in the check?
I believe this reflects the change.
The bottom line, the number, could you verify that?
If, if, we're looking at the same document that has changed, because what that reflected was costs of coordinating change orders at $67,113. Okay, so that, that has some change, reduce on, based on information that we've been able to develop since that back order. So what we're saying is, it's final change of $40,774. The balance of the contingency is $13,000, so it would be a potential change of $27,731. Not trying to confuse the issue by adding these numbers change, but we're just gonna try to get this project closed out, so we can get more items in, change it, we're trying to do that. So right now, change order five is still up.
Just one thing, I'm sorry to catch up. Would you say that bottom line of the discipline, we have not just wanted to make sure?
$27,000. $27,731.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because there was also a part of this question, something that Green and Associates was going to pick up due to.
Right, there were some applications of the documents that were our responsibility. So, that $27,731 reflects that, the number that we're covering is not included.
Is not included, or is it?
It is not included.
Okay.
On key words, exit devices, or on the panel exit devices?
Yeah.
So, for example, on these doors, there's some locations in three buildings where they don't have.
there's some locations in three buildings where they don't have the ability to lock those doors from inside the room.
That's an exit device?
It's an exit, it's a lock. Well, the exit device is that bar that spans across the whole door. It's a panic exit device, so in a hurry, people can just hit that next to the room. So until about eight years ago, it was not common to have the locks on the interior of the space in those conditions. But now with the whole classroom security issues that, more from whatever it's fine, we want teachers to be able to lock the door from inside, so that's a lot of order.
So does $1,800 per door to add that lock? And so when you say not required by code, I mean, a significant chunk of the chamber was drafted for here, adding those doors.
It's a fairly large number, yes, because each of the locations, it's pair of doors and each of the rooms has two pairs of doors, so we just follow.
And absent paying me another, like, per door for the, over the doors, like?
They would remain as is. Well, it still has that panic lights on there. But probably if you have to lock on the inside, you'd have to replace that whole thing.
All of you, alright, so, I mean, we have, why not, here, say, multiple cases around $1,800 for add exit devices? So if you already have a bar on there and it doesn't have a lock?
Correct. So it's possible to remove the existing one, put the new one on, it has to lock. It has to go to lock.
So if you don't do this, those doors just won't lock?
You cannot lock them from the inside. Correct.
Who cares? I don't know what happens in room talk, right, so learning center, media center?
Yeah, so for example, the fishbowl on the other side of the wall over here, is one of those rooms. We use that room for meetings and media center is essentially the library in the other buildings. And they have pairs of exit doors with those panic exit devices.
So these are lock situations in case there is, like, an active shooter, God forbid ever happens, that the teacher can actually turn that door and keep that person out, that is what we're saying. We're saying the additional cost or the reason it's so expensive is because it's not just a matter of him just going and just flipping and changing the lock. You have to take out the, I'm guessing, a whole panel?
Correct.
If I want to lock this door right now, I need a key, right?
Yes, correct.
And, and so, you know, this building is special, right, it doesn't get a ton of use. And also I'm tremendously concerned by an active shooter situation in this building. That, you know, it seems to me to pay $1,800 a door to have the ability to lock it from the inside. Would be useful if that lock being dependent on whether a person in that room has a key at a given time. A lot, stacking a lot of assumptions. The fishbowl, for example. Can anyone look, can you keep that in mind? Except for, sure Scott. But I just noticed he was appointing.
Can I comment real quick? So, and what you're saying is true, this, this building is mostly office built. But I still treat it as a school. It could potentially at some point in the future turn back into a school. So this would be a gymnasium, next door, the fishbowl would be media center. So we still install those same, the same hardware that we do in schools here at home. And to answer the other question I think you had, could the spaces where we have panic bars now that are not locked open from the inside, could you still lock yourself inside? Sure, the teacher could do that, they would have to expose themselves like outside into the hallway and lock them from the outside. So what this does, with these new panic bars, and what you see right there, right there, they don't have to expose themselves that threat, you got a key. Every teacher's key, what is teacher in their, on the inside, correct? Any teacher at Parker, any teacher in that studio, all their keys would work out of any interior space. I'd be keyed it specifically like that. Okay, we call that the X key, so any interior space, so if a teacher in room three has, they have to have their keys on them, is in room 20 for a meeting, they may need to lock down, they can do that in that space.
And this is a physical key, it's not like a supply grab?
Different.
It's a key, it's a physical key.
It's their key that they're.
Okay, can all teachers in our district all have?
No.
They don't have a key. Okay, well, okay, then isn't a plan that all teachers will have?
Yes. Yeah, so the initial rollout of this project, we only received two keys per classroom. So we've been going through and getting additional requirements that the staff needs and we're getting those keys back.
So eventually, every single teacher will have a key that can lock any door from the inside?
In their building, yes.
They don't have that now, they don't have this now.
Every teacher, every teacher in a space has a key. We have some of them that have aids that, that kind of share that key as the ones in or something like that. That's, that's what we're setting for now.
To be clear, though, we have identified, especially apart from some people that have not recovered.
Yes.
There becomes questions of having a key at every room, that's, that's just not.
Well, right.
That's not, that's not the direction we need. But everyone should have an opportunity, we do have that list, we can make sure that, again, just making sure that all of our paraprofessionals recover, all of our teachers, regardless of if they ever are in a situation where they have to lock that, they have the key to be able to lock that, so we'll follow up on those stuff.
But here, central offices, you and your parents would have keys for any rooms that they were in there.
Yeah, and the issue, the issue in this building.
All, everybody, yes.
The challenge in this building is we have a lot of barriers here. Registration information and residency information, all those pieces. And, you know, it goes to the conversation about adding additional security resources in the building. Officer Chief Pulling will tell you that those people aren't up front anyway, so whether or not the officer would help in a previous situation or not, the answer would be no, because they'll be off the building. Senior, just having an additional, the opportunity to provide additional safety, hoping in a situation that occurs.
But the plan, I just want to make sure because if not, what we want by the new central offices for all of our schools, wise, no matter who's they are, are important. And priceless. So we want to make sure that once these additional systems are installed, that every person will, am I hearing you right, every staff person will, or every teacher instructor person will have a key to these doors, is that yes or no?
But, that is true, yes, they're within their building.
Okay, because it would be just not a good thing to have something just installed, you know, like. It's just there, you know, it would just be a problem.
So is that my, key, danger, possible?
No. They're internal, on purpose.
So, just to put a context on this, well, two stories, one, my third, something about two detention centers in County many years ago, they gave me about 50 keys, all of which looked the case, and felt in the dark, exactly like this. So that's when I did have a small ride in my room, the lights were off, and it was pitch black. I had to figure out which key actually opened the door. And I forgot that lesson. But the other part of that is, you know, at Bloom and other school red work, there are some, I have a passcode or a key, and they work on, you know, things relative to what I would be there for anyway. I don't have a key to the, you know, the storage locker. But I do have a key to my room and all other English classes, or all of their special ed classes. And, you know, other teachers have access to overwrap things, but then they have access to like social studies and things like that. And that's kind of what we're talking about here, right? Where if they would be there, they would have a key for their, to their job.
Yes.
But they don't have a universal skill key that fits every single.
No, they do not, that would be a building master or what we have as a grand master. We certainly do want to minimize my personal rules and give each teacher one key. I know that our teachers are going to multiple spaces throughout the day. They may have to carry a, measure a key or two for those other spaces to maintain our level of security. Once we start giving out more and more keys, they're potentially physically losing those keys. We want to run across that.
Is there a way we can put identifiers, if that is the case, that we put identifier? You know how teachers, there are things that you can buy at the hardware store, little things you can put?
Color, the color code?
Yeah, color code, maybe, something.
Possibly look into that, but let teachers have a couple.
Yeah.
But again, we want a key facility, absolutely.
Yeah.
So I understood this chamber order of the primarily doors and lock sets were missed in the initial draft for one reason or another. And then, I see in the letter here that we have all of $8,000 worth that's actually required, or $3,000 that's required by code. And we're looking at like $40,000 that's not required. So I'm just trying to get a sense for, look, $1,800 to lock the fishbowl, I wouldn't, you know. Do these offices lock? I assume you guys got those in the initial packs. So I'm just trying to get a sense for whether it's really worth $40,000 to lock rooms and nobody cared about not to get the right first time. I mean, it sounds like the work's primarily already been done through the teacher's five rooms and most of the rooms that matter. It sounds like there's some rooms on this list that really, I don't know, will be locked separate, but you guys would be up for it, so please tell me.
Well, I don't want to speak for Scott, but we felt that even though they got missed on the first pass, it was not necessarily purposeful. There were some decisions made, for example, where it looked like panic exit devices were fairly new and in good condition. And I think the decision was made to not replace them in that one. But the list that's compiled says the mandate was to replace all the locks through all the buildings to give everybody that level of security, so that they're going to lock the door from inside the space.
I mean, you use the fishbowl as an example, you know, having a lock on that room makes it much of a help in an active shooter.
Would be, would those of you who are. So it's, it's a labor of protection that, that we are maintaining through our facilities.
I do have a question, it's not going to sound real brave. But, so these locks are from the inside that we're speaking of, so they are able to be seen from the outside. Am I correct?
Yes, so the locks are all inside.
And then, this is, I'm sorry, so these locks, are they, they're any type of bulletproof locks? If they were to be shot at or not?
This, this work really just completes, it completes the project at the start, right? So these were forgotten, we're adding these pieces.
No, I was just asking the question.
There's no difference between these, these aren't any special locks, they're just completely or, unfortunately, it was forgotten originally, and so here we are.
So it's just the basic work of changing, changing, and not just the lockout, is the whole thing that we're connecting, that's all the cost, is it really?
Correct. Just a comment, do you have some security equipment in place for some of that stuff you just mentioned?
Part we never needed.
I hope, well, I hope not, but if it is, we can talk about that.
So there's nothing that we are approving tonight, are there any other questions or concerns? One we need to remember?
Next, please.
Thank you very much.
Could you provide more information?
Thank you.
Well, I think, just making sure that we have, that we're looking at the same number, so if the, if what we have in our board package is not correct.
Yeah, we follow this fairly well, because primarily I can see the numbers match. So if you in mind just help me with that.
Next discussion, item on the E-RAY, 2018 E-RAY Internet in, that was the end of our network.
Sure, this is just to draw the board's attention to some great work by Tony and Ben Lott. Certainly always keeping an eye on how we're using our taxpayer funds as appropriately as possible. I can remember the first contractor that we negotiated a thousand years ago was for 10 grand a month of 10 megabits per second. Here we are, dropping our costs considerably, looking at it per year. So currently, our internet costs $7,157 per month. Our LAN is $24,158, we dropped those considerably. Done $4,145 for the internet, and then $5,250 for the LAN, essentially using smart switches and others that push the, the internet is needed. We're looking at savings of $266,000 per year. It's incredible, so thank you so much. It really adds up, and it's important, and truly it's, it's thanks to the skill of our tech department that we can take out the project, and get that in the amount, so thank you.
Go on.
Next item, item number seven, we have a number of action items. The first one, approval of bills, the bills are submitted for approval by the Board of Ed each month. Ms. Blackman was asked to review the bills for the month of April, and had the opportunity to review them prior to.
So I took them at the April bills and saw it in there, so I was thinking that was unusual. From about last time. And a motion to approve the bills, to approve bills in the amount of $605,370.35 for the month of April.
So, second? Roll call, please.
Okay, Paredes?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I please have a motion to approve payroll in the amount of $1,50812.86 for the month of March as presented?
So.
Blackman, Ms. Huckabee, and Ms. Blackman, roll call, please.
Okay, Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion is passed. May I have a motion to approve the attached resolution to honorably dismiss educational support personnel? Right, I'm so moved by she. Uh, this is Paredes and Dr. Paredes, roll call, please.
Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I please have a motion to approve the proposal for an additional one FTE special ed teacher at Parker Jr. High?
So.
Huckabee?
Say.
Paredes? Before roll call, I do have a question. In the memo, it mentions that we, we, it essentially states that we need another person in wait because we need to be able to reach, to meet our 70/30 split or ratio. What is it now?
I don't, I'm not sure I understand the question.
So in the memo, it mentions that.
But we're meeting 70/30 now.
So you're meeting 70/30 now, but in the memo, so the memos, I can't remember what the memo states, but it said, I thought it stated that you needed, I thought it stated that you needed another person regardless so that you could meet your 70/30.
So the, both of the memos talked about that we have new students incoming. Next year, we have three more students incoming to that special area of need at Parker that are outgoing in here. So I'm adding three students to the mix. This year, we added a sixth class for the teacher over the five that they normally would teach because we had so many students that needed that math. Some of them are moving, some, you know, it's, it's always an anticipating game of who's going to move in and who's going to move out. We plan, because we can't, I don't want to leave a lot of room in those classes, because that's over staffing. But, and, so not leaving a lot of room, sometimes I think that. that's caught up to the line of what we need. We are not in any way out of compliance. But coming next year, our, our sixth graders incoming again outweigh the number of eighth graders leaving. So that's, that's an indicator that I need more, and I already have a teacher already performing an extra class. So we're going to look at that and really move towards the inclusion model that we're looking for, more inclusion.
Okay, okay, so maybe I misread it. I just wanted to make sure, um, we weren't out of compliance and that we were actually at our seventy percent internal ed, thirty percent special ed classroom makeup currently.
Absolutely not out of compliance. We're, we're well within the seventy thirty in, in all of the classroom. But for the instructional classrooms, we also have a couple of fifteen students per class and we were over that, we were at fifteen when, fifteen or seventeen when we started in one class. And so we immediately made adjustments to that as we added a sixth class to the teacher. But knowing that I have three more students coming in, I can't, I can't do that again.
Okay, I just needed to make sure I understood, thank you. Roll call please.
Graves?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Four.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Have a motion to approve the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen meeting schedule as presented as the board meeting takes. Huckabee? Second. Dr. Graves?
I do have a question.
Please, discussion?
So with this, uh, with the new, uh, meeting, I meant to ask, I'm not sure if I did it last time, do we, do we take into consideration, like sometimes we're all, you know, kids are all on vacation, five days, would that take into consideration when these students run?
Yes.
And so if it turns out we miss something glaring, um, we can always make a motion to.
Just say it.
Yeah. For general plan, this is really important so that, uh, in terms of communication, people have a chance to plan ahead of time and say, okay, I would be with that one in October. I know they're talking about bills, but they're concerned about the budget. I would be, uh, the one in October to talk about Park, or, you know, and then kind of like, you know, gauge and, and make arrangements around it, but thank you.
It's not written, it's not. Matt's key plus. Roll call please.
Okay, Perez?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Four.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Have a motion to approve the furniture bids for the Serena Hills Steam Lab totaling seventy-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-six hundred and forty-three cents from Lowry McDonald and Frank Cooney pending receipt of the monetary donation from Mr. De Castro. This order will not be placed until the funds have been received. Ms. Huckabee? Second. Second, Dr. Graves? Any discussion?
And I may be going, and I just thought about this, I may be going into the next item, I don't really want to do that, but with the scale back of, it seems like we might need the library as, as, as planned, if I read that correctly. So if you're, if you're scaling back on, you will be better in terms of changing for that, will we need the furniture as, as much for all of that, just taking into consideration maybe?
This represents a new lower cost. Some items from the initial presentation, commercial.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Okay.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Four.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Have a motion to reject all bids from the current scope of the Serena Hills Steam Lab and approve refitting the project with a smaller scale and alternate pieces. Huckabee? Second. Dr. Graves? Any discussion?
Just a couple of questions. The original project was to knock down a water table, put up a water table, that's right?
Yeah, I agree with you too.
And the bids all came in four hundred and nine.
Pretty close.
And what's, what exactly is the need, so no, no walls, just electrical?
Well, yeah, we go base and then everything. Number of aliments essentially, something you can choose, removing part of that wall that we might leave and then just kind of another cosmetic changes. They're trying to cut that construction number by sixty percent.
Is there any opportunity to take, to be involved with something, for example, those four tasks that they didn't do, okay, you know, running a house?
Can we come in?
It seems, yeah. We're not building a house yet. Also, water, low barrier of water, that's a hall that would price me over a few hundred bucks.
It was expensive.
Any other questions or comments? Or suggestions? Roll call please.
Okay, Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Four.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Have a motion to approve student fees with no changes from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. So Ms. Huckabee? Second. Dr. Graves? Any questions, discussion? Roll call please.
Graves?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Four.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Have a motion to approve implementing the kinder program in District One Sixty-One during the summer of twenty eighteen at a cost of nineteen thousand dollars. So, Ms. Huckabee?
Second.
Perez?
Perez?
Uh, any questions, discussion? Um, I cannot remember when we discussed this at the last meeting, but since this is something that's going to be implemented during the summer, what, um, was discussed in terms of, um, how results will be reported back to the board about the program?
I don't know if we discussed it specifically. Obviously, research, yeah, but we can also talk about how we manage our own data. We can collect that out of our resources.
Because I thought part of the idea here was to figure out if this was something that we could replicate or keep as a permanent, uh, program within the district. So I want to make sure we are capturing what we need to capture and that that discussion is coming back here to allow us, one, to hear about the program and assess challenges or failures, but also to have a discussion sooner rather than later about the availability.
So we're going to add this to our, our student management system as well because this again becomes one of those pieces that we can track in our data warehouse. Like we had our summer school conversation, so, you know, tag students who would do attend the kinder prep, that way we can track them throughout their careers in District One Sixty-One.
Any other questions?
What, what can we have in place, major, first major, we're interested in that. So we implement this program and, and we have what can we, students go through it, I mean, may have the, as compared to, um, really, compared to yet, no.
But I mean, there are a number of early literacy assessments, what are named, literacy, think awareness, you name it. We can determine how we want to assess the students and what's going to be our role in that. And then, then we'll just, but also the data collection as well because we do want to compare apples to apples.
Is this Title I eligible?
I don't believe that would be.
Because it's part of the credit research.
In the lottery.
Constitution of the lottery, so presumably if it were filed, it would not be eligible for students who would be attending Western Avenue because Western Avenue is not that.
Yeah, I mean, so I would be interested not only in the results, but if this was something we wanted to keep as a program, what's the, what's the true cost to actually, to actually implement it and where would that come? Because obviously we want to be able to improve all of our students, but we also don't just think of the type of one, so, okay.
The original research, um, reflected on how students continued after having exposure to the program. So there, the, um, original IRV is still checking and following the children to the best of their ability that attended either the kinder prep program that they ran or their preschool program. And so what, what really we can, we would look at, I think, is our, um, initial benchmarking when they come in and we'll have a list of kids that were in the program and a list that were like in control group and we can see if any changes affect them, you know, if they, if they're scoring higher on our incoming benchmarks and whether they're scoring higher after, you know, the, at the second, the richer benchmark. Um, and then they were following the students. I don't know that the cost would be much higher, um, if we were to continue to run the program in the future because all of the extra pieces that have more cost to them are really outside of what we're doing. Um, so it's the incentive for parents to bring them in for testing. We wouldn't necessarily need a pre-test and a post-test outside of the school day. Um, we would do what we typically do in our, in our program. So I don't, I don't know that the yearly cost would be much higher.
But we can, we'll go back, reflect on what it looks like. Now, really, to wrap this point after, after we had a chance to implement, I think we'd want a much better grasp on those soft causes that I can, it's not a teacher, it's not a paraprofessional, but there are other pieces of connecting with that because we want to go.
Right, well, I mean, it's a program that, that uses incentives. I mean, so, um, and then I don't, I mean, that's, you can say that for larger discussions, but I mean, that, that's a huge, um, discussion point for later on. And then Dr. Graves, Dr. Graves, I remember, I think, um, you had an IRV question.
I did, which was with my daughter. Okay. My daughter was in this program, so I have the IRV and she said they just modified it to the six week, kind of truncated six week period, which is fine.
I have a question. Would we be able to compare ourselves in the index to see how other kids have, have done this program, other districts they're working with, or are we, can you remind me, are we the only district they're working with this summer?
I don't know the answer to that. Um, I think they're trying to have another district do it as well, um, but at this point right now, as far as I know, we are the only district doing it this summer in a shorter period of time that Illinois would our summer program.
Okay, so you'd not be apples to apples if saying, I don't know, Lynnwood is doing this or if, um, Ezell, one eighty-one is doing this or someone is, because?
I don't know if, well, if they're doing the same six week program, I think they're looking a lot by it to align with the summer programs that exist. But I, I would have to ask and I certainly.
Okay. But in any of the large, we get a person, research, whether they wanted to do the parents, we wouldn't have access to the other. Right, I was just interested if you have anything that, you know, compares also. I know that when we, you know, we're looking at like map scores, we can say, well, how do our kids do compared to, you know, this other group, but, um, I don't know, just...
Yeah, at the very least, if you ask, I mean, if we know who the district is, we can just go straight to the source and it's very interesting comparing profiles or sharing the data.
Will the researcher offer the data or will they share the data with us? They indicated that they would share the data with us, the, the pre-test and the post-test in the world that the, that children do.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Four.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Uh, motion to approve accepting H-E-P-A-E, asbestos abatement bid for the removal of ceiling tiles at Heather Hill School is in the amount of fifty-seven thousand four hundred. So, second. Dr. Graves, any discussion? Roll call please.
Graves?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Four.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Have a motion to approve accepting the bid from Just Bright Acoustics for ceiling tile replacement at Heather Hill in the amount of ninety-four thousand one hundred dollars. So, Huckabee?
Second.
Graves, any discussion?
I just had one question, I just wanted to just, uh, verify something. So this is in relation to, one, just a pool?
Yes, it's everything back.
Okay, just wanted to mention. So, wow.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
My hen?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Four.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Have a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of revised policy eight twenty-five. So, Ms. Huckabee? In a second, please.
Second.
Dr. Graves, any questions or discussion about?
We've received some comments from a community member who would have to be here, I don't know if it's, what you want to hear from her.
Does the community member want to speak?
Sure, um, so I'm a community member, sent the email and in this past year, at least one of the elementaries has started to partner with a lot of commercial entities to run school programs. So my main concern is, kind of, what was the initial need to start partnering with commercial entities and then why was it kind of, and this kind of gets to the advertisement piece of it, but then how did we look at and how did we solicit these partnerships? So that's my concern. When you're starting bringing commercial entities, there are a lot of children across the district and that not for these programs. So how are we approaching these programs to meet all children across the district? We talked, we talked about it at the last meeting, it's one district across the board and some of these programs are quite expensive. So I was just kind of wondering why we were going with commercial entities rather than highlighting a lot of nonprofits and other, um, organizations in the community such as the library, the Park District, um, the Homewood Science Center. I mean, there are plenty of other opportunities, I just don't know why we pursue this in kind of a rush this last year with commercial entities and that just, that's why I kind of highlighted the advertisements, um, as kind of this last step of, we, it's kind of spiraling quickly for me as a community member.
Thank you for your email. Do you want to?
I, I think we're always looking at opportunities to provide chances for children to connect and some of those are commercial, uh, some of those are nonprofit. We've connected directly with the Park District this year, uh, but frankly, there haven't been the programs. And, um, short of creating all of them ourselves, as we, and at the elementary level, when we talk about ourselves, it's the classroom teachers, who's also doing trails on the run and also doing, you know, you name it, their jobs. So I think we have to look at public and private partnerships to the extent that we can provide a good service for the children. As we look at our policy for building usage, the focus really is on opportunities. For the building usage policy, we had artificial hurdles in place preventing, you know, the best example would be a mom or a dad who wanted to do piano lessons or a Spanish club. The cost was prohibitive for them to come in and work with our children and they were charging nominal fees. But again, that would, in theory, that could be considered a commercial club because they're charging. So I think part of it is removing the hurdles to get clubs into the buildings, making sure that we're bringing quality clubs and we're doing background checks, you know, and focusing on topics that are exciting for the kids, uh, but then also balancing that cost and there is a market associated with it depending on how much they're making that triggers charges on our side. Uh, but if we, I would say that if we did not bring in commercial clubs, we would probably decrease the opportunities. Uh, but if we, I would say that if we did not bring in commercial clubs, we would probably decrease the opportunities for our kid by fifty to seventy-five percent.
How would you option?
I was just gonna, also, just to give a little context, uh, for, and of course, LangitStars is now a department, but, um, years ago, uh, LangitStars would come in, and that was a for-profit group. That, um, if you, again, if you chose to, um, take extra classes, you could spend a lot of money, you know, to, um, to pursue that, and, you know? I guess to your earlier comment about, you know, how equitable is that to all our kids, you know, can all our kids, you know, afford to do this? Um, well, you know, yes and no. I mean, yes, if you can secure, you know, other funding and grants outside of the school, um, but, you know, certainly no if, if they enter that entirely. Um, you know, just so happened that my children, you know, were able to take advantage of that for a while. Um, there's other things that happen, and I think at the end of the day, because I've been part of this conversation a lot, it lasts five, five years, maybe even six years? That ultimately we do want to, you know, try to provide as many opportunities as we can for our children, um, to address their diverse interests and, um, you know, tap into, you know, opportunities that can lead to, you know, growth as, as individuals and, and groups of kids. Um, it's, and again, I, I think the key here is a balance, and I think that all the conversations we've had, uh, on board and in the administration have really focused on, you know, coming up with a balanced, uh, solution to helping our kids succeed.
So perhaps what leaves you, and I, and I hear, um, I understand your concern, I hear, and I definitely think that, um, we want to make sure that we're providing opportunities for all of our kids in our district that are also reportable. So, I mean, perhaps, perhaps if, if we can, um, figure out what this looks like in terms of us just making sure we have a conversation after we.
I want to make sure that, so we spoke originally in this, actually, you were most concerned with receiving flyers. So as it, just so I understand, is it now shifted to?
Well, because I feel that those are advertised for these commercial entities, um, and not just the ones in charge, but I mean, the, the true for-profits. I mean, the, the engineering, the STEM program is structured as a for-profit company.
Right, but I, again, as we're discussing, are you most concerned about receiving an email, or are you concerned with the cost for children?
I'm, I'm concerned with both. This was, when it was brought up to the board was as the advertisements. How you're revising that policy.
Sure.
We didn't, we don't necessarily go out and look for programs, probably generally, or board policies, if they want someone watching program and it's related to education, so, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, for example, the PTO bringing a drama club or a STEM club, for example, perfect example, um, and then at that time, we're, I mean, we're going to offer the STEM club.
We're not going out actively hunting down these commercial organizations, right?
Not necessarily, but I, you know, certainly we're being more aggressive with the Park District.
Well, now, you say, with respect to the Park District and the library, we have been working with them to try to promote their programs, football, baseball, things like that, and they're a part of.
Correct.
We're not advertising them as much. So I went back to this, I mean, you and I are going to take one flyer per, out of a hundred, so that's.
I'm sure we can improve that, but I, I believe, though, that we are sending out whatever they ask us.
I just would, we would search there before these companies.
Right, and I feel, I do think there's, um, opportunity to continue to strengthen our relationship with the Park District and provide more opportunities to promote their program in 161. I mean, we've had, there's been, I don't know for how many years now, we've had conversations about the baseball and softball programs and, um, because there was a time not that long ago where we did not, you know, advertise any of those things at all. Um, so I think there's an opportunity here, and, and I think, um, you know, we should make sure as a board, we just do a check, you know? At some point during the school year, next year, like, to see what the balance is and, and what, what we're offering in, in cost systems or in the glory of, um, programs that we are bringing outsiders or we are bringing into school.
And then, to miss the backside point, we have identified, we're, I believe, at our most recent communication committee, but two meetings ago at Western Avenue, we did identify that we are not sending home some items traditionally from the Park District, and we've addressed that specifically. So as we found those areas where we have not, we haven't shared as much information as we could, we tried to address those right away.
Uh, again, just to begin to clarify this, that there's a difference between policy and practice. Policy generally tends to be something that you've written it down, and, you know, there's kind of an expectation we're really going to adhere to that. Um, and it's kind of like if you have policy around, you know, putting caps on how many kids are going to be in class, and you're kind of setting it a little bit instead. Um, at least it would take a lot more, uh, steps to get that changed if, if you decided that maybe you wanted to change it later on. In terms of practice, there's a lot of things we do in the district that, as a practice, we recognize that this seems to work at the time, uh, that we have some input and with our kids, but it's not something that's necessarily set in stone. Um, but it's something that can offset expectations, and certainly the dialogue we get back from the community is essential to developing and forming that. Um, but, you know, so something that maybe, you know, like, we're looking at policy, um, eight two five tonight, you know? This policy really, I think, gives us some latitude in terms of our, um, our practice, and it may turn into, well, we may want to tighten our practices a little bit based on discussion. So for, for what we're doing tonight, you know, this is strictly setting an outer boundary, so that if you do want to come in, at least we have some room to, to do that.
I, I just wanted to follow up to that, I, so, I think it's good to hear that if we have an issue with maybe one organization, seems like it's getting more airtime, let's speak with another. I suspect it's hard because it's asking for more. I don't really see any logical distinction between nonprofit and profit, for-profit organizations. If a community member wanted to make a career out of tutoring, that community member would be a for-profit person, but I don't know if we would have a problem with advertising, you know? Won't advertise your services, parents want to use your services, well, sure. So, um, I don't think at a policy level we can draw on to, oh, if you're for-profit, we're gonna dispay. I think the administration needs to, um, do what it's been doing and send out, you know, any reasonable organization that wants the product sent out, and to the extent we need to do a better job of, um, getting the Park District to get their stuff over to us and send out, or, um, we can improve that. And if there's problems with a particular organization being over-advertised, then we can address that. But I guess, I haven't seen a reason why we would, uh, call out for-profit organizations particularly, because I haven't seen any that are picking up problems with the Park now. That's, that's, you know. Are there any particular for-profit groups that you think are inappropriate for, for 161 to do?
No, I just was not in agreement with those programs, and I was receiving a handful of, uh, advertising them legally for them.
But there was, I, I know a lot of programs advertise, and I would not tell my children.
I would just like the option to opt out and not receive them.
Well, um, I think it would refine education systems that may be possible in the future, and I don't think we're there yet.
Any other questions or concerns? Roll call, please. Nelson?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Correitas?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed. And now, even a motion, please, to move to executive session, matters relating to personnel five ILCS, one twenty, one twenty dash two, and student disciplinary case five ILCS, one twenty slash two CI.
So, Ms. Huckabee? Briggs? Roll call, please. Okay, Briggs?
Yes.
Correitas?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed. It should be in executive session, five ten. I know I say that every time I have a regular board meeting, this time it's nine.
Roll call, please. Oh, roll, oh, please, sir. Correitas?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Blackman?
Here.
Huckabee?
Here.
Ford?
Here, and the floor is present. I need, oh, sorry, uh, consent agenda, I'll need a second. I need a motion, please, to approve the personnel report as presented. Ready, so Huckabee, uh, roll call, please.
Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Correitas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed. Next item, approval of expulsion decision for student twenty eighteen dash E. I have a motion to approve the expulsion for, uh, for two calendar years for the reasons discussed and on conditions discussed in closed session, and to authorize the board, the president of the Board of Education to issue the written decision in this matter. Ms. Huckabee?
Second.
Mr. Nelson, roll call, please.
Okay, Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Correitas?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed. And a motion, please, to adjourn this meeting at nine oh eight E M. Dr. Briggs and Ms. Huckabee, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same thing. Have a fabulous Monday evening. Happy.
Thank you.